Remain standing for the pledge of the U.S. with the Texas flag. Gary Shortnose, would you like to deliver the invocation?
Certainly.
Would you?
Our heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather this evening or this morning for the benefit of the county of Grimes. And please look after our commissioners and our judge. Help them to guide to making the proper decisions. And Lord, look after our first responders and our armed forces personnel, that they are all, they all volunteer to protect us whenever we may do. Yes, in your son Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible. Would you be seated, please? We'll now go to public comments. We look forward to hearing from citizens of Grimes County. Those, do we have any other submissions other than these two?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Hold on. Dick Commander, please. And since you're not Diane Flannery, I'll go to David Tullis.
I can let Diane go first if you'd like.
You're there, we'll keep that. Any more?
No, sir.
Okay. Good morning, this is David Tullis. He is going to agenda item, talk about Roden Bridge adoption of Pine Brook roads. Mr. Tullis, if you could, limit your comments to two minutes or less.
Good morning. This is Judge Sad. My name's David Tullis. I'm from Plannersville Precinct 2, and I'll be brief. I'm asking that the court vote in favor of adopting the school bus routes through Pine Brook subdivision. The county's been maintaining those roads for a number of years, and it will really benefit a lot of young lives, make their route to and from school much safer. If you go through Pine Brook, it's growing, more kids are moving in every day. I think this is a good move for our community, so I ask that y'all please support this. And as an addendum to that thought, Pine Brook Drive ends less than 200 yards from the new 249 extension. It might be of benefit for the county to consider gaining an easement from Pine Brook to 249 to gain additional access for Pine Brook in case of emergencies. Thank you very much. You all have a nice day.
Thank you. Court, we'll call Diane Flannery for public comments. Diane Flannery?
Hi.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Ms. Flannery, your paper says that you would like to speak on the agenda item Pine Brook.
That's correct.
And if you, would you limit your comments to two minutes, please?
I'll try. Yeah, I'll do it. As one of the residents of the growing Pine Brook subdivision located on 202, this is a formal request for the bus route for Pine Brook Drive. I tried to get David to call me back, and I'm imploring you to approve it. I also send you messages, and unfortunately, you didn't answer, but Joe, you did, and so did Harry. In the U.S. Census estimates that July 1st, there was approximately 2.73 people per household. There's 190 boxes rented at the railroad track on County Road 202. And assuming that the renting of those boxes live past the railroad tracks, that puts the subdivision estimate population about 519. The estimated population for all of Plannersville is 2705, so that gives us 20% of Plannersville living in Pine Brook. I lived at the beginning of Pine Brook, and when we moved 30 years ago, it was paved. It's not paved anymore, although Harry and the road crew have done an excellent job putting in ditches and with the, with the grant money from Harvey. It's so dusty. And I think I wrote you about my air conditioner and the neighbors and all that went down. The other thing is that we need an exit. My husband had open-heart surgery at the end of April. On May, I think it was the beginning of May, we had the bridge covered with water, and there was no way of getting in and out. If there's a fire at the beginning of the subdivision, then people in the back aren't going to be able to get out. So we need an exit to 249. And I'm going to write a letter to TechStop requesting that and get all the people in the, in the, they've already said that they would sign a letter, so we're going to write to y'all and to TechStop about that. So that's basically what I have to say. I have this letter that my husband and I wrote, and I'd like to leave it. So that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can I leave it with the court?
You can leave it over with County clerk Vanessa Brzezinski.
Okay.
Watch the wire on the floor.
I want to give a big shout out to Harry Walker and his crew and his staff. They have done, they're so understanding and helpful and all of them. When they were digging the ditches, the guys would come and say, oh, we're going to do this, we're going to do that, and kept me apprised. So it's a great job they're doing.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, you have any public comments? I'm going to take advantage of the time again, reminding anybody that's here or anybody that's watching, if you have not completed your census, your 2020 census, I cannot again tell you how important it is that your records are documented, your information is documented. You can do it online, you can call the Census Bureau. There are just a number of opportunities for you to get that information submitted, and that affects so much of the federal funding that may potentially come to our state, to our county. And as we said in the very beginning, each person that responds, or the way they have it allocated, they're worth about $1,161 per person. And if everybody was to respond, that's how, potentially how much money in federal resources that we could gain in our county. So census 2020, it's getting close to the end. Please make sure you submitted your data. With that, we will go to consent agenda items number three and number four. Number three, consider and take action to approve the treasurer's list of claims. Agenda item number four, consider and take action to approve payroll. We've all had these for a few days to, at least 72 hours, but a few days to review. Are there any questions?
I'd like to make the motion that we approve consent agenda items three and four.
Second. Said you squeaked under the wire. There's a motion to approve consent agenda items three and four by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dubianski. Is there further discussion? In hearing, none all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. We'll go to agenda number five, agenda item number five, American Legion McCluskey Post 640, Commander Steve Story, presentation of M.I.A.P.O.W. Day proclamation. That is our attachment five. Good morning, Commander.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for this time. I'm Steve Story. I am commander of American Legion Post McCluskey Police Department Anderson. And to recognize and honor those P.O.W.s and M.I.A.s who are still missing or still held captive, the Congress has established September as P.O.W.M.I.A. month, and specifically the 3rd February in September as P.O.W.M.I.A. Day. And with that, we have a proclamation signed by, if I might read that, please.
Please.
Whereas the American Legion is committed to achieving a full accounting of all P.O.W.s and M.I.A.s from the Gulf War, Vietnam War, Cold War, Great War, and World War II. This means returning all living P.O.W.s and reparation of the remains, or finding convincing evidence why neither of these are possible. And whereas the month of September is designated as Remembrance Month for P.O.W.M.I.A.s, and September 18th, 2020 is National P.O.W.M.I.A. Recognition Day. And whereas on September 18th, 2020, in honor of National P.O.W.M.I. Recognition Day, many Americans take time to remember those who were prisoners and those who are missing in action, as well as their families. And whereas American Legion, members of the American Legion McCluskey's Post 640 will hold a short ceremony in remembrance, remembrance of our nation's prisoners in wars and missing in action from all wars. And whereas the Missing Man White Table will be displayed at the VFW Post 4006 on Friday, September 18th, 2020, from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at 1575 West Washington Avenue in Navasota, and that the P.O.W.M.I. fly will be flown at that address on that day of remembrance. Therefore, I, Joe, about the third Judge of County of Grimes, Texas, do hereby declare the month of September as a Remembrance Month for P.O.W.M.I.A.s, and September 18th, 2020 is National P.O.W.M.I. Recognition Day.
And I proudly sign that proclamation. Thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
And you're here with our Veterans Administrator?
Kate Wall.
And Gary?
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Oh.
I see you're a mask.
Who was that masked man?
It was a long range.
Thank you. Hey, thanks, Steve. Thanks, Jay. All right. With that, we will go to agenda item number six for a quick update on ongoing projects, Grimes County Courthouse, County Jail, Grimes County Jail, and Grimes County Justice Center. Mr. Al Peeler.
Good morning. The, we'll start with the courthouse. We are in the third floor. We're painting County Court at Law, Judges' Chambers, and Secretary. And we'll start down the stairwell. Middle of next week, we will be in the courtroom and the hallway plastering. We are about to finish up the plastering. We have a little issue that we got to take care of in voters, and then the courthouse will be ready to fully paint. We painted elections, but our engineer was not happy with it, so we'll have to redo that. The county judge's office, county judge's chief of staff's office, and the jury room is all painted and plastered. It turned out better than voters, so I'm pretty sure that will pass inspection.
It looks nice.
Besides that, we're, we're. So we're through, we'll be through with the courthouse except, to the citizens that are worried about the lawn, I will be working on that in the next budget cycle. We'll get that taken care of just a little soon, and I don't want to do anything before construction is through with the lawn. Moving on to.
County jail?
County jail. We are, we are, our HVAC systems are now talking with each other. We have some problems of staff adjusting to the new ways it has to be done over there. Doors need to be shut to keep transition. They learned the hard way in, in the control picket yesterday. They left the door open, wide open, and it saturated it with water. They got to keep stuff shut because the units are talking to each other, saying, hey, we need over here, when you introduce uncontrolled air, air to a system, it messes it up. So we're, we're going through growing pains at the jail right now. We'll get through it. It's not, nothing that we didn't have to do over at any other building when I put a new system in. It's going. We had a little setback with internet. That's going to take us some time to get software up and running so that we, the systems are talking to each other, but we can't see the systems talking. So we're going to get that completed, and it's going to be an ongoing process on that building. So right now, I'm happy with the way the systems are talking. Now we just got to train our people. We'll go to, unless there's some questions on anything.
What are you planning on getting back to the mold remediation in the jail?
As soon as they let us. As soon as they.
So we're still kind of locked down because of COVID. All right?
Yes, sir.
Grimes County Justice Center?
Justice Center is going good. Anybody's been out there? We have studs up on the mezzanine, and we're laying in, all of our, our air handler units are in now. Now we're laying out minor stuff. We're laying all the ductwork. We're starting to put that in, starting to set up a little bit. You're starting to see more, more than just concrete and structure. So I'm planning, I'd like to do a walkthrough with select people at probably the beginning of November. I'd like to do that, just to give a look, see for people, because I know people are getting curious, and, and I've been pretty strict on who goes in and out. Todd has, and it's not.
It's fair.
It's not, it's a safety thing, you know? We're welding, we're putting stuff up, stuff overhead. The workers do not need to have people out there and watching out for them when they're trying to do something. So it's not that I'm just being strict on that, it's just for safety concern. But right now, it's going great. We're 60, 61 days behind schedule. That's with rain, COVID, all that stuff.
Very good.
You happy with it, Commissioner Mallett?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Cox?
Thank you for your report, sir.
Not a problem.
Have fun at the root canal this afternoon.
Yeah, boy.
Agenda item number seven, consider and approve proposed changes to the Grimes County Fire Dual Response Map. It's our attachment number seven. Good morning, Ms. Lee.
Good morning. I was approached by Chief Vickers from Whitehall Bonfire Department and Chief Malone from Todd Mission Fire Department regarding some changes that they wanted to make to their dual response within their, their boundaries. And I had spoke with Chief Malone when they, they first implemented their dual response, and I knew some changes would be coming once they started doing run calls for a period of time and kind of figured things out. What you have there are the changes that are proposed. It reduces the number of the dual response that they had, areas, boundaries that they had, and just kind of cleaned them up and made them make a little bit more sense for who's responding to those areas.
Are both chiefs in agreement with this?
Yes. I have maps.
And this is only affecting those, those two?
Just those. And I have maps, I had them sign off on. Chief Vickers signed off on this one, and this is signed off on by Assistant Chief Justin Correa. Chief Malone has kind of stepped back, and Assistant Chief has stepped forward to take on, take on those duties for her at this time.
Commissioner Cox and Commissioner Dubianski, do these kind of affect your precinct areas? Do y'all have a feel for this?
There was some discussion the other night at their meeting about this, and what they did was got together with the other fire department, and we talked a little bit about this yesterday. There are some roads that, for instance, Whitehall can't get to because of a bridge or something there, and the other, other fire department would be paged out, I think, in that, in that case. And that's some of the things that they looked at when they, when they redrew these lines. I don't have a problem with if they work together on them.
Cat, who's, uh, Cat, do you, so if we do indeed approve these changes, then we get that to dispatch, and then dispatch alters their maps, or they go by, what's, what's the process?
Process.
Yes, ma'am.
I have these built already, so the next process will be, they'll be sent to COG to make sure that everything is done, snapped, and everything with the map. Those have to go up the chain to two different entities to be checked and to be implemented into the 911 system, and then everything comes back.
Okay.
With okay errors, no errors, and then we update dispatch at that one.
So if we approve it this morning, it does not go into effect this afternoon?
No, it'll go into effect.
All right.
And if we do it this morning, it'll be a week and a half, I believe, before the next cycle comes up.
I didn't realize it had to go to COG. That makes sense.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And, and just for clarity, the, the name you see, like you see Navasota, Todd Mission, those, those are your first response?
Yes.
To the fire department in that area. So if Whitehall responds, the first call on the dual call would be Navasota, then it would fall to Todd Mission. And we're also good with those maps.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to leave you out, but I did. Okay. That's a valid point. Thank you. Commissioner Mallett, we'll just leave you out of this discussion, all right?
And this doesn't change their response boundary, it just changes the dual response within their boundary.
Right, right, right. So if there's a second tone?
Yes, when there's a, a structured fire, there's an automatic dual tone.
Right. Okay.
And it's not affected, you know, Plannersville or anything?
No. It, it's not changing any of the, the boundary, just within their boundary.
I'm glad you know what you're doing, because there's a lot goes on behind the scenes. Thank you very much. Any other comments?
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Cat.
Judge, I believe the agenda item mentioned that we approved this. I think, I'm sorry.
No, you're right.
I'm sorry.
So considering approve proposed changes to the Grimes County Fire Dual Response Map, is there a motion to approve?
Judge, I believe we approve the proposed changes to the Grimes County Fire Dual Response Map.
Second. There is a motion before the court on agenda item number seven by Commissioner Cox, seconded by Commissioner Dubianski. Is there further discussion? In hearing, none all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. We'll go to agenda item number eight. County Auditor Mary Nichols, consider and take action to approve reimbursement to employees to be made through accounts payable instead of payroll.
Judge, I talked with Jim Bob Trent and.
Oh, the treasurer?
The new treasurer, yes. I spoke with him, and both of our departments feel that it would be a much easier process and really more transparent if we pay them out of accounts payable for even reimbursements, because we now have the capability to put them as a no, no 299 on that, because it is just a reimbursement, which we did not necessarily have that capability with our previous software. So I think it would be great if we could just go back to doing it out of AP. We can offer the direct deposit, just like if they have direct deposits in their check and they want to use the same one, we can just copy that information over, or if they want to use a different one, you know? They can give that information to the treasurer's office.
Good move.
I agree. It's easier record keeping for all individuals involved. Yes, sir.
With that being said, I'd like to make the motion that we approve reimbursement to employees to be made through accounts payable instead of payroll.
Second.
Can we make that effective today?
Effective today.
Thank you.
Does the second say it holds? Okay. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number eight by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Mallett, to make it effective today. Is there any further discussion? In hearing, none all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? That motion carries. Thank you. Agenda item number nine, County Elections Administrator Lucy Ibata, review and approve the list of election judges with alternates for the Grimes County 2020 general election. I told Lucy, because she's at another location working with voting equipment and things of that sort, that I would present this for her.
She left me with copies.
I was going to say. She threw me under the bus.
Thank you.
Commissioners, what you have in front of you is a list of the precincts that will be operating during the general election for early voting that starts on October the 13th, but it, this is specifically for November the 3rd, when all of the precinct locations on this list will indeed be open. It has the election judge, and it has the alternate judge. All of these judges have been contacted and have agreed to serve in these capacities. Any comments or questions?
Does this include the centers that won't be open anymore?
The cent, the precincts that are not going to be open during this election have been omitted from the list in front of you. Yes, ma'am. That is correct. If there are no further comments or questions, I make a motion that we approve the list of election judges and alternates that have been submitted for the 2020 general election as submitted by Ms. Ibata. Second. There's a motion before the court on agenda item number nine by County Judge Joe Fowle, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? Hearing, none all in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Would you need to get one of these signed? I'll go ahead and sign mine, and we'll pass, pass it around. We'll sign two copies. Thank you for that. Thank you. We'll go to agenda item number 10, Grimes County Clerk Vanessa Brzezinski, consider and take action to approve the order of, the order to adopt the County Clerk's Records Archive Plan 4 FY 2021 pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 118.025, an authorized county judge and commissioners as signatories. See our attachment number 10. So we did have a public hearing on this, this morning, but I will let you pick up from there, Ms. Brzezinski.
Thank you, Commissioners. So you have already seen the archive plan that I have presented to you earlier today. So this will just be the order adopting that records archival plan. Again, that does not lock us into any, any of the expenditures. That was just kind of a guide as to the projects that I would like to work on. They do not have to all be approved today. I am going to bring two of them to you today, but to be approved, but this is just so that I can't do these. Without this plan, I can't do anything. So I have to have something in place, and in the plan is just, you know, a generalization of projects that I would like to do this year. Doesn't mean they aren't going to get done, but again, we do get an average of $7,000 a month income, so money is constantly being replenished back into that account every month. I'd like to read the order, if you don't mind. Whereas local government code, section 118.011F enables the Commissioners' Court to adopt a records archive fee for the preservation and restoration services performed by the county clerk in connection with maintaining a county clerk's records archive. Whereas Commissioners' Court approved the collection of a records archive fee of $10 to commence on September 1st, 2019, which the county clerk's office will collect at the time of filing or recording of any public record excluding a state agency. Whereas section 118.011F of the local government code was amended to increase the amount of the county clerk's record archive fee when a non-court document is presented to the county clerk for recording or filing from not more than $5 to not more than. the county clerk for recording or filing from not more than $5 to not more than $10. Whereas, the approval, with approval from the Commissioners Court, the county clerk will collect a records archive fee of $10 when a non-court document is presented for recording or filing with said fee, which will commence on September 9th, 2020, which is today. Whereas, after Commissioners Court approval of the county clerk's records archival plan for 2021 and the plan being accepted as presented, now therefore be it ordered by the Commissioners Court of Grimes County pursuant to the Local Government Code, Section 118.011F, hereby adopts the Grimes County Clerk's Records Archival Plan for 2020-2021. Further, the fees collected may be expended only for the preservation and restoration of county clerk's records archive. The funds may not be used to purchase, lease, or develop computer software to geographically index public records for current recordings, adopted this 90th of September, 2020. Is there any questions?
Yes. On your second, whereas, it says excluding a state agency.
Correct, so if a state, go ahead, I'm sorry.
My question is, does the state charge us for record documentation?
No, sir.
Okay, as long as it's knock for knock, because if...
Right.
If they're gonna charge us, then we ought to charge them. If we talk to our state legislature about that.
Anytime we receive something from the state to be recorded, we do not charge them that fee.
But when we send documents to them, they don't charge us either?
Correct.
Okay. Just wanna make sure that it's fair, it's fair.
Right.
If there are enough other questions, then I'd like to make the motion, we approve the order to adopt the County Clerk's Records Archive Plan for FY 2021 pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 118.025, an authorized county judge and commissioners as signatories.
I've got a question.
Well, not until we have a second.
Second to motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Walker and a second by Commissioner Doviansky. Are there any questions, Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir. On the plan, it looks as though the total revenue for your plan is going to be $168,000. But you presented three options, option A, B, and C, with option A being $302,000, option B being $162,000 roughly, and option C being $47,000.
Right. Now, those, that is not actually part of the plan, that was just kind of to give you an idea of how much some of these projects in the plan would cost. Not, it's not gonna say that we're gonna do all of this, I just wanted you to be aware of the projects that are put into the plan. Doesn't mean they're all gonna get done this year, but that's my, if I don't have it in there, I can't do it. Does that make sense? So what the difference is, is if I get shelving or not, basically. And if I don't get shelving, there should be plenty of money for the other projects. And that's just something we're gonna have to look at. I know David Doviansky said he could maybe get some shelving from Texas A&amp;M.
We have the shelving.
And so, you know, we may not need to buy shelving, it's just, we, there's a lot of unknowns right now with the new building as far as space and, and the things of that nature, but I just wanted you to see how much those projects will cost, because that's, that's not actually part of the plan.
But if we, if we do approve the plan as presented, we all, including you, have the understanding, that's not a go-ahead to spend these funds.
That is absolutely correct. That is just to approve the plan as stated, it does not approve any projects which are, that have to come to you and get approved separately. I just wanted to attach that, so you could see how much money these projects will cost.
So will you approach the court again in the event that you're gonna complete a project?
Oh, absolutely, yes, sir. Yes, sir. Anytime I want to go ahead and implement any of those projects, I will come to you with that plan and the cost and get your approval.
Has your question been answered, Commissioner Cox?
Yes, sir.
Are there any further questions? Then again, we have a motion before us on Agenda Item Number Ten by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Doviansky. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. You're up for Agenda Item Number Eleven?
Yes, sir.
Consider and take action to approve adding an additional 4,263 marriage licenses to the current contract previously approved that was underestimated and to add 40 additional loose pages to the deed books at a cost of $16,885. This also includes a credit of $8,065.54 for the vital records that were overestimated. Proposal is dated June 25, 2020, see attachment number eleven.
So Commissioners, what I have is my first project in my archival plan that you just approved. This is actually a, a project that y'all approved earlier, either this year or late last year. When we did the marriage records, when y'all approved it, he found that he had miscalculated the number of marriage licenses.
Who is he?
I'm sorry, John Rickreby with DPS Data Preservation Solutions.
Okay.
So he found that there were 4,000 more, 4,263 more marriage licenses than he had anticipated, okay? So that required them to add more books. So that is a contract that had already been approved, but since it's more, we're coming back to approve this additional, okay? And then there were some vital records, those Navasota books that he scanned, it wasn't, he, he had overestimated that one, and so we're getting an actual credit of $8,065.54. So it comes out to, actually, he gave me a revised, I think it's on the back of this attachment here.
For $11,883.25.
So there were also some loose pages that we had found that we don't know really where they go, but they need to be preserved because they're very old. And so what we were, he did was to, he wants to scan them and go ahead and preserve them until we know where, where they belong, so that they are preserved. That's $140. So again, you add the, the $24,000 for the marriage license, $140 for the loose pages, and then the discount, it comes to $16,885.12. And I did get a budget analysis from the auditor's office for Fund 54. And they did budget some money in there.
For 2021?
For Fund 54.
No, for budget year 2021?
Oh, for 2021, yes, sir.
Okay.
That's next budget year.
And Fund 54 is the one dedicated for county clerk records?
Yes, yes. Okay, here it is. So for Fund 54, they had budgeted $66,786.
So you had that much in the fund and now you have, after they take these budget numbers for 2021, then you leave about, what, ninety some, nine thousand something in there? Is that was our previous conversation? Or am I getting that?
Nine thousand was what, nine thousand was what was in there at the end of 2019, and we budgeted that in the 2020 budget.
Okay.
So for 2021, they're budgeted $66,786.
And where's that money coming from? Was that supposed in your?
That was on five feet money.
That was your original budget that you turned in around May?
No, that, that's the estimated revenue from the history of revenues that we've received. That's the estimated revenue for that fund for archives that her, that her department collects, fees of office.
So it's just, like she said, it's an estimate of how much?
Between auditors and attorneys, I have a difficulty in keeping up. That's what we're supposed to do, I'm, I'm sorry.
This is dated August 21st, that I have.
John hadn't even said anything yet.
Ms. Mary, am I understanding you to say, at the end of 2019, there was a remaining balance?
Yes, there was a, it left a fund balance of $9,393, $99, I believe is what the dollar figure was. And when we figured the 2020 budget, we budgeted that in because of the projects that she had for this part 2020. We budgeted that fund balance in for her expenses. So I have not, I didn't have time to go look in between the courts today to see how much has actually been used or whatever. But she did tell me that she will have a few more bills coming in on that, so.
Okay, so this amount may be already encumbered upon, the 66, or this is good?
I don't think so, 'cause that's, that's what she should get next year.
This is what she should get.
So basically, when I look at it, I have $66,000 that I can spend that's been budgeted. And that's just an estimate, 'cause we don't know exactly how much we're gonna be taking in. It's kind of a conservative estimate, so.
And this project will be for fiscal year 2021?
I'm sorry?
This, this project will be for fiscal year 2021?
Correct, this will be for 2021, starting October 1st. And so it would be for the, the, uh... That would complete that marriage license project and get those loose deed book pages done.
Okay, so has this credit of $8,065.54 been applied to this 11,000, to this 16?
Yes, yes. So the way you look at it, you've got 140 plus $24,010 minus the $8,065, gets you the $16,885. So he's, he's just deducting that from the total.
So the 16 is the final balance after the deduction?
The final total, yes, ma'am.
I have a recommendation, Commissioners. On Agenda Item Number 11 and Agenda Item Number 12, that we table both of these until our budget workshop next Wednesday, where we can have our budget books in front of us and we can see what's already been allocated in those particular areas, and then we can say, I think, give you a better idea, Vanessa, of, yeah, it looks like the funds are gonna be, and give you the green light to move ahead on all of that. But right now, I, I'm personally lacking in some of the information I need, but since we have that workshop scheduled for next Wednesday, if you could make yourself available...
Oh, yeah.
...to, to help us walk through and to see actually what we have allocated or dedicated in the proposed budget, so we can, because the numbers right now are pretty doggone tight.
Right. And I did give, ask him to give me a balance as to what we still owe.
That would be great to have also.
Yes, yes, so I'll have that for you as well.
So with your permission, Commissioners, I'd like to table Agenda Item Number 11 and 12.
I'll second that, alright.
Is there any discussion? And we're approving Agenda Item 11 and 12 to be tabled by County Judge Joe Fowle, seconded by Commissioner Doviansky. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Vanessa, don't mean to delay again, but it's...
Sure. No, I get, we wanna make sure the numbers are going.
Thank, and this is good work.
The other item was to conserve these Commissioners Court record books, so if y'all after, wanna look at these, just be careful with them, they're very fragile.
Got you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the work that you've already done with your plans. We'll go to Agenda Item Number 13, Grimes County Human Resources Director Kalida Coleman, and there she is. Number 13, consider and take action on the payroll tax deferral effective 1/20, 1/2020, I see it, September 1st, I'll get it. September 1st, 2020, see attachment number 13.
Good morning, Commissioners. So if you read your attachment, the President sent out an order on August 8th to defer certain payroll taxes for employers and employees who are affected by the coronavirus. From my understanding and the reading through TAC, the IRS website, we have the option to opt out of this deferral. At this point, there is no certainty that they are going to forgive these taxes. At the moment, right now, it is just a deferral option, which means the employees or the employer will have to pay these taxes back between January 1st through April 21st. So if we opt to do the deferral, our employees will see, will receive a bump in their paycheck for the remainder of this calendar year. However, come January, we're going to have to withhold those taxes along with their new taxes, which means they're going to receive a lesser amount on their paychecks. If all of the deferred taxes are paid back by the end of April, then we start getting into penalties. It's my recommendation that the court opts out. The IRS website uses a terminology that the employers may defer taxes. It does not say shall or require to. I've had some phone calls from employees, send out the treasurer's office, I've had phone calls from employees, and they do not want us to defer their taxes.
Question, employee John Doe wants to participate in this plan, and John Doe resigns or is terminated on December the 15th of this year, who's obligated to pay those taxes?
The county will be.
The county will be?
Yes, sir.
And if John Doe remains, starting in January, he will have to pay the deferred payments along with the current payments, which reduces his check that much more...
Right.
Until it is paid back by April?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
And if it's not paid back by April, then penalties on top of that?
Yes, ma'am.
Are the penalties for the employee or are the penalties for the county?
Could possibly affect both, depending on how the county takes action to pay it back.
So in Section 2A, it says that it shall be made available. Do we have an option to opt out?
It says made available, but if you check the IRS website, it says the employee and the employer may. It says which employers may defer deposits and payments of the employer's share of the social security tax withholding, incurring failure to deposit and/or failure to pay penalties. All employers, including government entities, may defer the deposit and payment of the employer's share of the social security tax. So it's not, in my opinion, it's not required, and the employees that have reached out are not in favor of us deferring it either. So I'm just here speaking on behalf of the Grimes County employees that don't want this to take place.
Do you pay it now or you pay it later?
Later might be more.
Yeah.
Does the county as a whole have to opt out, or can an individual employee say, I want to participate?
It would be an accounting nightmare if we allowed employees to pick and choose.
That's right.
That's gonna be a lot of work behind the scenes with FI, with the auditor's office, with payroll, if we pick and choose. And then you still have the option, if John Smith decides he wants to opt out, and then two months later, he's gone, well, we're gonna have to pay that back for him.
One of the things that I think we also need to consider as a county, none of our employees have been affected on the issue of receiving less pay or reduced pay or no pay. Now, they could have a working spouse that maybe got laid off and that's caused a hit in their household, but I don't think from an employment standpoint, we should be considering that because we don't consider... because we don't consider that when we hire or terminate employment as to whether they're married or not, have kids, or not working spouse or not. That's not part of our decision in making our decision. So since we have not affected any employees' pay, also for the COVID testing, we did make an allowance to any employee that was financially hurt by having to pay copay or for testing between now and the end of the year. We said that the county would cover that, so I don't. It would be, I, I recommend with the HR director that this is not an option we ought to offer our employees.
And I actually had an employee who just called with that same scenario. Her spouse is out of work, and she said she does not want us to defer it either. So you have some out there that have these certain situations where they might be impacted financially at home, other than what they get here, but they're not wanting us to defer it either.
Because they're going to have to come back and pay it back.
Sir?
They'll have to come back and pay it back later, so it's.
Have we, may I defer to our county attorney? Have you had the option of looking at this?
As long, as long as you all have, I think it's a horrible idea, so. Regardless of whether we can or can't, I think it's a horrible idea. Now, there is, you note in section four, there is a discussion of that forgiveness. And that means maybe, just maybe, there may be forgiveness. But keep in mind, there's a payroll tax that's going to social security. And so you've got some older folks in the community that are going to be scared out of their minds about living there in social security. So I, I agree with the HR director and will ask for forgiveness instead of permission if it turns out that it's some other way.
On an agenda item number 13, I make a motion that we do not offer this to our county employees.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 13, by County Judge Joe Faust, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Oppose? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
So would you advise the president we're not going to participate?
I still have to call him right now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I like her attitude. Agenda item number 14, Roden Bridge Engineer, Mr. Harry Walker, consideration of possible approval of a replat of Huntsville West 22 subdivision lot 78, block 4, recorded in volume 698, page 225 of RPRGCT located in precinct 1. And no, I won't repeat that.
This is the, the public hearing we just conducted before the start of the meeting. However, I'm going to recommend that you table this item as the applicant has not cleared up their back taxes yet. Because of the legal requirements on the public hearing, I felt like we needed to proceed with that. And, and he has paid his fees, but he's got back taxes that have to be cleared up before we can approve the plat. So if he gets the taxes taken care of, we'll bring this up in a later day.
Is there a motion to table? And I assume, Mr. Faust, we do need a motion when we table?
I would prefer that you do that, but
It's not a problem.
The rules are for you, the court, if there was somebody that was mad and said, hey, we need to have a vote on this, I'm not ready to table it, then making a motion is the safer way to go.
Sure. And you did, Commissioner Mallett?
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 14 to table this, and we will table it until, Mr. Walker, you tell, should read, to put it back on the agenda. So it's by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there any further discussion? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. Agenda item 15, consideration and possible award of annual contracts for the following. Number one, flexible base material. Two, contract hauling. Three, bridge labor. Four, culverts. Five, moving. And six, tree trimming and removal, see attachment number 15.
I'll go back through these one by one, Judge.
Please. Yes, sir.
The, we opened bids on the 27th for six of the annual bid contracts to award. Limestone base is one of the fourth ones. We received two bids, pardon, we received five bids. Connors Crestone, Frost Crestone, Texas Materials, Glanfuequa, and Wolfing Construction Materials. We bid two different types of material. We bid a grade one slash two limestone and a grade five limestone. The bulk of what we do is grade five, but we do use grade one or two on occasion. The way the bids came in, Frost, Frost Crestone was the low bidder for the grade five material, and we're recommending that you award the bid for that material to them. Connors Crestone was the low bid on the grade one, two material, and we're recommending that you award a second contract for them for that material. We did this last year. We use the grade one and two contract as kind of a backup. At times, due to mechanical reasons or rainfall, whatever, we can't get material from one of the bids, and sometimes it's beneficial to have a backup source. So we're recommending two separate contracts. One Frost, who currently has the contract for the grade five material, and one Connors, who currently has the contract for the grade one and two material.
Just because I don't know, which is the better, grade one or five?
We use grade five because it's a little smaller gradation. The larger rock size is a little bit smaller than the grade one and two, and that's one of the big complaints we get from people on rock roads is the rock is too big.
So the density of the rock is still about the same?
They meet the same specifications. The difference is gradation only.
Okay.
So they have less of a larger rock, they have a smaller top size, one three-quarter inch versus two inch. It's not a lot, but it does make a difference. But we've been real pleased with the material from Frost.
Okay. Thank you.
If, if any, a possibility that Frost can't supply, could we get it from Connors at that $7,000, the grade five?
Yes, they, they have grade five material. They just weren't low on that material. And as long as we have bids, we have gone through that process. If we don't go beyond limits of that bid, we should get material from them also. And we have in the past, so things happen, the pressure will break down, or one bid gets rained out and the other one's not. We've done that in the past.
Do we need separate motions for?
That's what he's, he's asking for, individual approval, so.
I move to approve the award of the contract for grade five flex base to Frost Crestone and grade one, two to Connors Crestone.
Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 12, item number one, flexible base materials by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That portion of the agenda item is good. Now we've got a contract hauling number two.
Excuse me, Judge, would you do the, the second half of the flex base? The grade one or two material?
Well, I made a summation for both of them.
Yes, sir, he did. Stick with us. We'll stick with you.
I shouldn't be writing while you're talking.
We're going to, well, I do it when you're talking. We're going to agenda item 15, item number two, which is contract hauling.
Contract hauling. We have four tickets we received this year, ICE Trucking, Glanfuequa, Stabbedwise Materials, and W Benson Trucking. A hauling contract is bid on a distance per ton, and we specify it from 1 to 10 miles up to 101-plus miles. I won't read all those different figures, but they're in your package. The upshot of it all, ICE Trucking was the low bidder for all the primary mileage groups. Generally, we evaluate it on the basis of the mileage to the two different arms. ICE has worked for us this year. They did the hauling for the Grant project we just completed, and they performed very well. They have not had our annual contract in the past. Based on their performance earlier this year, we're recommending that this bid be awarded to ICE Trucking.
I move that we approve the contract hauling bid to ICE Trucking.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 15, item number two, contract hauling by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. All in favor, or is there any discussion on that? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That part of the agenda item passes. We'll go to agenda item number 15, item number three, bridge labor.
This item, we only received one bid for Mayland Bridge. Mayland has had this contract in the past most years. I will say that they went up on their price this year. Actually, a fairly significant amount. I think they finally realized nobody was bidding against them. But again, they've done good work for us. They do all the minor repairs, the small bridge projects that aren't of sufficient size to justify going out for bids. We've had a number of repairs that take stop sites asked us to make this year, and they've taken care of all those. I have no problem recommending that this contract be awarded to Mayland Bridge.
I'm going to award the bridge construction favor, send this contract to Mayland Bridge. Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 15. I, agenda item 15, item number three, bridge labor, first by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion carries. We'll go to agenda item number 15, item number four, culverts.
On our covert bid, we received two bids, one from Wilson Culverts and one from Preferred Pipe Distributors. Preferred Pipe only sells HDP pipe, which we don't use for the road construction, road crossings. We allow it on private drives, but we don't use it for the roads. And we didn't request bids on HDP, so that bid is really just for informational purposes. We couldn't have ordered it if we wanted to. Wilson Culverts has had our contract in, in the past for many years, and we recommend that it be awarded to them again this year.
I'm going to award the Culverts contract to Wilson Culverts. Second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 15, item number four, culverts, by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski to Wilson. Is there any further discussion? And hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That portion of the agenda item carries. Agenda item number 15, item number five, mowing.
On this bid package, we received three bids, Triple B Ag, Wayne Cool, and Crosby Road Construction. Crosby Road Construction was the low bidder on all three areas. However, Crosby Road Construction is owned by a county employee, non-elected official, but a county employee. So we were concerned that this would represent a conflict of interest. I do not believe there is an actual conflict of interest. The gentleman, the question had no involvement in the procurement process. However, our purchasing policy said we should also avoid the possible appearance of conflict. I think that this situation would rise to the level where we create a possible appearance of a conflict. Therefore, we are recommending that the bid be awarded to the second low bidder, which is Wayne Cool, Wisconsin.
These were sealed, sealed bids?
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, it's not
They're sealed bids. There, there was no involvement in bid opening and bid preparation, any of that. And I'm very comfortable saying there was not an actual conflict. But if you go out to the public and you say, oh, a county employee just received a bid from the county for a large contract, it may not pass the scout test, and that's the concern here.
What's, what's the difference in, anticipated difference in cost between number one and two?
Area A, the difference is about $600 per cycle.
How many cycles, two cycles a year?
Two cycles a year.
So that's 12.
Area B, the difference is about $1,200 per cycle.
So that's 24.
And then area C is $400 per cycle.
So that's eight. So that is 12, 14. That's a $4,400 difference. And I appreciate your concern and your caution, Madam Auditor, is, and I know we've got the county attorney.
I think you need to ask him first.
Well.
Because it was, you know, a competitive sealed bid.
Right.
I've got some comments about this.
It's hoping the public can see what happened.
Go ahead.
I mean, it, it was a sealed bid, from my understanding. I mean, there was no advantage as far as somebody having information that could influence the bid they bid. The employee bid what the employee thought it could do the job for. There's nothing illegal about it, and elected officials can do the same thing if they've abolished their business with the county. I'm not real sure. The question that I have is, did the employee know that the bid would be disqualified based on an appearance of some conflict? I'm not myself personally of the opinion that there, there would be a conflict.
To, to address your, your question there, Commissioner, given this employee's background, I think he knew that there was the potential that this would be classified as conflict of interest. And I've spoken to him, and he understands my recommendation. There's a, there's a large difference between being a conflict and appearing to be a conflict. And that's where we are in that, that gap.
Yeah, and I, I've talked to him to I, I mean, it's, it's above board, it was fair and square, so to speak.
It was.
To save the taxpayer money.
He got the lowest he did.
Yeah, we might get another book done for what we're concerned.
I understand there's an, an appearance, but at the end of the day, I mean, everything was above board, as far as I know.
Good watch.
And there's no
There's no question about that anymore.
Well. Well, I guess I'll make a motion.
I'd like to hear from the county attorney.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I've had the benefit of talking with both Commissioner Cox and also Mr. Walker. The way I started out my conversation, I think, with Mr. Walker, because I was not familiar with the conflict that was being claimed, members of the Commissioners' Court can do business with the county if you disclose your relationship with the entity and you abstain from the vote. And that is the same for City Council. It's the same for other governmental bodies. And so, if that's the case, it seems to me that an employee of the county should be able to contract with the county. In that circumstance, were it to be one of you all who were engaging, had a business, was doing business with the county and was trying to get the mowing contract, if you disclose and you abstain, it's up to the rest of the folks to decide whether to approve that. You weren't involved in making that contract happen essentially from the other side of the dyes. And so, I think that's what the law recognizes, is we want the taxpayer to get the best deal. Sometimes, especially in rural counties, you're going to be limited at the number of folks that are on the other side of the dyes that are providing a bid. However, and so, that to say, I don't know anything by, for instance, the local government code or otherwise that would prohibit it as far as the statute's concerned. But Mr. Walker brought to my attention, and I had either fallen asleep or just wasn't privy to the contract. I have a file that includes, I think, original draft of proposed purchasing policy that the court adopted in, I believe, 2018. And as I recall, as my file indicates, that was proposed by both the Treasurer's Office and the Auditor's Office. I suspect it had something to do with our audits, our outside audits, as well as maybe grant funding, that we needed to have that in place. I seem to recall somebody saying that to me specifically, that we need to have this purchasing policy that's going to have an effect on us, on how we're seen. That policy specifically says county employees can't do business with the county. And so, you, when you all approve a policy, nine times out of 10, very few times has there been a case, for instance, like the tax ceiling for folks over 65, very few times, I recall, ever a circumstance where the court approved a policy that you couldn't disapprove or unapprove the next day. Same thing with the purchasing policy. It would be the circumstance if you all said, I'm not sure why we thought that was a good idea, or why that was a necessary part of the purchasing policy. I'm not sure we thought that through. I'm not sure what I did yesterday, whatever your comment is. If that was your thought, I think you can change that policy. But that's really the question that you have to ask yourself, is there a concern about the appearance of impropriety? Is there some legitimate basis behind not having county employees or businesses that involve county employees? What if a county employee had a 1% interest in a business? Does that mean that guy can't engage or can't offer a contract or a bid to the county? I don't know. I don't remember the thinking. I remember somebody saying to me, we need this thing, and I looked at it and I thought, well, these are, this is for the bank counters. I'll leave it to the bank counters. And I didn't get involved in the language, nor did it concern me that it said employees might not be able to offer a bid or engage in a contract with the county. All that to say, Harry also pointed out to me some language in the personnel policy. I don't think that that would prohibit it, this arrangement, though it kind of speaks to the same circumstance in some generality of there shouldn't be an appearance of impropriety. So, to me, it's a decision for you all, but looking at it from the bidder's standpoint, and I want to be sure that we're not, you know, throwing any dirt on the bidder here, I don't know which county employees, if any, were privy to the adoption of the purchasing policy. So, I don't know that anybody knew that or knows that, because when you start at work for the county, it has been HR's policy to give you a copy of the personnel policy. And when we've made changes, our hope is, of course, sitting here in this room, from way up on high, these edicts down to the employees, our hope is they get a new copy of that page where there's been a change, so that they don't violate or unfail of that policy. But I don't believe that was done with the purchasing policy. I don't know why it would have been done. So, I don't know anybody that would have gotten notice of that thing, other than the folks maybe in this room or maybe in the Auditor's or Treasurer's Office. So, all that to say, I think it's in your hands. It's up to you to make the decision. But if you are going to approve this contract, then I think by that very statement, you're changing your personnel, I mean, your purchasing policy. And maybe you want to put the purchasing policy on the agenda for consideration of modification of that policy. Specifically, maybe you want to do it before that. I don't know what the urgency is, but I think this contract probably needs to be approved pretty quick.
Ms. Mary, do you recall the policy?
I don't. I don't recall exactly what it said. Toledo worked on that really hard. We can call her in and ask her what she remembers on that.
But as it stands, what I hear you saying is because of the purchasing policy, it's prohibited in the purchasing policy.
Mr. Walker sent to me one page of the purchasing policy that had boxes checked that specifically said the employee can't engage in a contract with the county.
That portion is actually the personnel policy. I did send the purchasing policy, which the language is somewhat different. I think in your agenda packets, the purchasing policy, pages fifteen and sixteen, address this issue. And then there's a, below that section, there's also another section, perhaps about perception. I will say, I've talked to Mary H. Johnson, the other mayor who handles our contracts these days, and she agreed with my recommendation that this does represent the insurance of possible conflict, and we go to the second bidder.
So, this is the purchasing policy in front of us, a personnel?
The ones that are, maybe pages fifteen and sixteen.
Yes.
And generally, at the bottom of page, the fifteen, the concept of interest language. And then the top of page sixteen is the type of... And that's, had it been just a personnel policy, I would have come to a different conclusion.
I think that is the personnel policy, and the purchasing policy is the one that had the X's in it. Pretty sure, I'll tell you, label as attachment to the only email that you sent.
That could be. This is the personnel, this is the purchasing policy.
Well, I've got the copy. I would just say, the copy that I had of the purchasing policy detects and acts what Harry sent to me, but it didn't have the same X's in the box. And so, I assume that my mind was consistent with the one that was finally approved. I think what Harry sent me was a copy of what was finally approved. I don't know if you all have a copy of what was finally approved or not. It's a policy that's multiple pages. I see Ms. Coleman waiting the wings to maybe tell you about her thoughts on it.
I was texting County Court, so I'm here.
Thank you.
I believe they were just notified of the conflict of interest. I don't see, I'm not reading.
I'm sorry. Couldn't hear you, sir.
Mention a, if any such conflicts of interest exist in Porterville, we know, probably we'll just try and read them.
I know it's stated in both. I think the verbiage is just a little bit different. But from the Personnel Manual and the purchasing policy, the, I think the content of the verbiage is to be that if you are an employee of the county, you cannot be directly rewarded a contract for a conflict of interest.
Do you remember the 2018 when we did this? Was there a specific reason?
Off the top of my head, Ms. Walker, I don't know. It could have possibly been just with conversations with some other counties, maybe, or piggybacking off of other counties' policies themselves. Because when I drafted the purchasing policy, I did solicit other manuals from other counties, and we kind of cut, copied, and pasted to tailor it down. I know we had numerous of workshops and stuff to get ours to where it was at, but I think that's why it was in there, because it was just mimicking off what the majority of the other counties have.
Yeah, I can see in some instances where that would be, where you would just award a contract without necessarily a bid. This was, you know, a sealed competitive bid. But we did differentiate between, I guess, contracting.
I know it's brought up issues in the past. We had a member of the court, many years back, who owned a company, and his company was awarded some stuff, and there was some major issues. That was back when I was very, very brand new, so almost 10 years ago. Can't remember all of the details, and that possibly could be why we went that route as well.
Yes, because we've had, there has been a member of the court with the DIRK company, and I think that's was considered.
I'm going to make a motion that on Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Item Number Five, we table the mowing contract for us to do a little bit more research on language and know exactly where we're at on this, because the $4,400, to me, is worth a one or a two-week delay.
We'll just offer that this won't come into play until next May anyway, because we've got plenty of time.
Are you certain? There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Item Number Five, specifically mowing, to table this until a future agenda by County Judge Jill Fouse, seconded by Commissioner Walker. Is there further discussion? Hearing, none all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries. Mr. Walker, we're going to go to Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Item Number Six, which is tree trimming and removal, still attachment number fifteen.
Tree trimming, we received three bids, Rock Construction, Crosby Road Construction, and Rufus Tree, Inc. In that bid, there were two different items, conventional tree trimming, tree trimming utilized in the pole saw. Rock Construction was the low bidder on the conventional tree trimming. Crosby Road Construction was the low bidder on the pole saw work. I have rec, because we do primarily conventional and limited amount of pole saw work, I recommend that this contract be awarded for both elements to Rock Construction LLC.
I move to award tree trimmings and removal services to Rock Construction LLC.
Second. There's a motion before the court on Agenda Item Number Fifteen, Item Number Six, specifically tree trimming and removal, by Commissioner Mallett, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there further discussion? In hearing, none all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That motion carries, and that concludes Agenda Item Number Fifteen for the time being. Agenda Item Number Sixteen, Consideration of Possible Action to Formally Adopt the Existing Bus Routes in Pine Brook Subdivision Into the Grimes County Maintenance System, Attachment Number Sixteen. Mr. Walker, we had a public hearing on that this morning. We also had two citizens address the court in favor of that adoption. Can you tell us your perspective?
Didn't have a public hearing. We have public comments on it.
I'm sorry.
Public hearing was other matters, but...
I'm sorry. You're correct.
Pinewood subdivision was originally developed in the 1970s. It was platter property. Everything on the platt is improved. But the issue of acceptance of the roads into the county road maintenance system has been a muddled mess ever since. There are conflicting documents. We have a whole file over at the Road Bridge Office of different court action and discussions for this issue. And it has, kind of the short version of it, one of the Commissioners, back many years ago, started maintaining the roads in the subdivision that were used by the school district as bus routes. That issue came up, was brought to court, and he requested that the court adopt those into the maintenance system formally. Court action was to take no action. They didn't act on it. However, Road Bridge was issued a map in 2003 that identified the bus routes, and this is, again, this is before the unit system, and told that these are the streets you will maintain in Pine Brook subdivision. Time passed. We've been maintaining them. 258 process happens in 2007. Some of these roads are on the 258 map as being public roads, or county roads, and others are not. So, it's still not clear even through the 258 process. We have done a lot of work in there. Pine Brook Drive is where we spent a lot of our grant money. That is a public road. It is covered in 258 map. There are no questions there. The other roads that are involved in bus routes are what's been issued, and I just want to resolve this once and for all. We talked to the school district and found out that what were the bus routes back in 2003, 2004, when this map was given to Road Bridge, are not all being used anymore. Turns out that some of the roads are on the map because the school bus drivers lived there, and it was convenient for them to run around and pick up kids and drop them off on the road they lived on. What we've gotten now from the school district, they said they use...
And just for clarification, this is NISD School District?
Yes, sir.
And that is the independent school district?
What the school district is telling us now, in Pine Brook subdivision, what they use for the bus routes, Pine Brook Drive, Tawny Berry Lane, Live Oak Lane, and Magnolia Springs. Well, Magnolia Springs on the platt is actually listed as Magnolia Lane. The sign says Magnolia Springs, but apparently that's not correct. What I'm asking you to do is officially adopt those four roads into the county maintenance system, so there will be no more questions in the future on whether we're supposed to be taking care of that block.
Would you kindly slowly state those four roads again?
Pine Brook Drive, Tawny Berry Lane.
Can you spell that?
T-A-W-N-Y-C-B-E-R-R-Y, Lane.
Okay.
Live Oak Lane, and Magnolia Lane. I use the name off the platt. It's Magnolia Lane.
Okay.
And that will leave, some of the roads that we have maintained in the past will no longer be maintained. If the whole premise of we're going to maintain the bus routes, the roads that the school district is no longer using for bus routes, we will not be performing maintenance on them.
So, will we have a citizen uprising on those roads?
It's possible there'll be some blowback on that.
How many roads are we planning on not doing any longer?
The roads that are not included in that list are Pinock Drive, Red Bud, Bogart, Weeping Willow, Mossing Oil, and South Creek.
And you said Pine Brook? Or was it all of Pine Brook that was already adopted in the, was it 2008?
All of Pine Brook is covered in the 258 map. Tawny Berry is covered in the 258 map. Live Oak is covered in the 258 map.
Up to Magnolia.
And Magnolia Lane, not Magnolia Springs, but Magnolia Lane, which is essentially the same road.
And that's actually a circle that goes around in there for the bus route.
It actually would be.
Boy, and those are...
Constitutes the big loop down at the bottom of the subdivision.
So, those have already been adopted or not, if it was in the...
They are covered in the 258 map.
They have been designated as... They, they have been designated as county roads ever since I've been in office because I, I travel that subdivision quite often out there and the signage out there has been on those roads and to my knowledge, ever since I've been in office, those have been designated as county roads.
So if they're on that map, they're already, already in the system.
This, this map is what was given to Road and Bridge, it has never been adopted by the court.
Yeah.
This is an unofficial document, we're on.
Was.
The 258 map, the 258 process that y'all went through back in 2007 is what officially designates the county road. So I don't think there's a legal issue regarding this, but out of an abundance of caution, I want to, you know, wrap this up nice and tight. Again, the prior discussions in many cases referred to the bus routes. Different issue than whether a road is a county road or not. Again, the commissioner, back in the old days, started maintaining them prior to the 258 map, you know, prior to any court action. He felt like it was a good idea to maintain the bus routes, probably the school district approached him. I have no problem with that, but we get challenged on this stuff from time to time. There's people that came in when we started working on Pine Brook Drive and questioned whether we had legal authority to do that. I just want to clear all those issues out. Now, the other, the flip side of that coin is also stating that we're not going to maintain the old bus routes, some of which we're currently maintaining, some of which we're not, so.
Were those in the map? Were those in the map adopted before as well or not?
Some of them were, some of them were not. Pin Oak and Weeping Willow were, South Creek, Mossing Oil, Budark and Red Bud were not. What we are actually maintaining is Pin Oak, Weeping Willow, Willow, and South Creek. They don't even make, Pin Oak completes a loop, but the others don't even make a loop because one of the roads on that loop is not in there. So it, it's been a mess for years, I'd just like to try and resolve.
Well, it's a 258 map, John, is that, was that, when we did that in 2007, was that, did we officially adopt those as county roads in that map?
Yes. What are you looking for?
So we, well, if we did this again and leave out those that were already adopted in that map.
They would have to be abandoned.
We can't vacate them, right? I mean, if, if it's already been done, do we have to do it again, I guess is my point as well.
That's my question.
If it's already been done, you don't have to do it again, but I think Harry's asking for a commitment by the court to say one time what the loop actually looks like, best that I know, that that's what we're, you're being asked to do. Yes, the 258 map, every commissioner that was in office and the judge, all participated, came to the table, looked at the map that was generated by Bickerstaff, was done using Cat Please information and everybody sat down and said, all right, does this include all of the roads that we are currently maintaining? Because the premise was, roads could only be included on the map if they had been continuously maintained since 1981. So all the commissioners sat down and said, yeah, looks good to me, looks good to me, looks good to me. Notice went out to the world, people were given opportunity to protest the inclusion. Couldn't force the county to include a road that you wanted included, but you could object and say, you included in the map something you're claiming is county maintained slash public when it's not. And there were only one or two of those objections. And so, all to answer your question, yes, if they were in the 258 map already, two years after the map was adopted, chapter 258 says, the map is conclusive evidence as to which roads can be in our county maintenance.
Okay, so we approved, well, like, like I said, if, if we leave out some that were already approved by the 258 map, that we really shouldn't do that. I think, correct, if we came in and actually just reinforced the approval of these roads that were in the 258 map, would clarify it better?
The question that you're asking is, can you vacate the, if, if you, are you vacating the maintenance or are you, there are different words you can translate here, are you discontinuing the maintenance? Are you vacating the public nature of the road? Those are questions I don't know which is being requested of either. And if you are vacating a road, there's a statute that mentions that you can't vacate a road until there's a replacement. I don't think there's a vacation of the public interest, I think it's a question of discontinuance of maintenance is what I'm hearing.
But would you be okay with keeping those that are already in the 258 map?
Definitely. The, I mean, the 258 map is the official document. I guess what I'm, I'm really asking y'all to clarify, we're not enforcing this bus route, we're not utilizing these bus routes for maintenance purposes and the, the presence or lack of a bus route on any given road doesn't affect the legal requirement for the county to maintain it.
Yes, that's what I mean, I think bus route isn't an issue, it's, it's already in the 258 map.
I think that's where a lot of the confusion came in, is that the platte created public roads, but that's a separate operation than adopting them into the maintenance system. The two-step process, why they were never adopted in the maintenance system back when, I don't know. Then we got this hybrid of, okay, if it's a bus route, we're going to maintain it. Well, I'm not sure if there was a legal basis for that, you know, again, this happened many years ago. I'm fine if, if y'all want to say, we're going to go strictly by the 258 map and we're not going to worry about bus routes, which we've seen change over time anyway.
So whatever.
I'm fine with that, I think that clarifies the issue.
We will continue to maintain maintenance or officially adopt it, since they were already adopted, do we, I mean, how would the motion look? Would we reinforce them out of confirmed?
Well, you can go confirm, yeah, that's what you want to do. And keep in mind, I, I don't, this is, this is Harry's deal and so he's got much more insight, egg and fatise on what's happening out there, but keep in mind that if you start making decisions on bus routes of this is going to now be maintained, it may not be used.
That's why, that's why I'm trying to stress the fact that this is the 258 map and we'll reinforce them, not necessarily the fact that it's a bus route.
I think that is probably the cleanest way to address the situation overall. Bus routes have no legal standing.
But we did adopt the roads in the 258 map, we'll reinforce that.
So Mr. Walker, so what I think I'm hearing you all say is although NISD has this as their map, our, our official or our stance should be according to the state statutes if the road, we will continue to maintain those four roads that have been confirmed to be in the 258 map.
Yes.
We will not be vacating those roads even if they're not used by NISD.
What we're really doing is vacating any consideration of bus routes. If a road is a public road and it was included in the 258 map, we'll maintain it. If it is not, not public or not on the 258 map, we're not going to maintain it.
Okay, just wanted to hear that.
Somebody want to make a motion since it's, I guess you could even say what he said, but. As long as those catch in the notes.
We will maintain, I move that we will maintain only the, the roads that are on the 215, 258 map, that are currently on the 258 map in Pine Brook.
With no recognition of bus routes.
Yes, with no recognition of bus routes.
So how would we rephrase it? Because it says, take action to formally adopt existing bus routes.
They've already been adopted, so we don't need to adopt them again.
We're, we're adopting, you rephrase it by the 258 map.
Okay, so we're not going to adopt the existing bus routes, we're going to maintain those roads that were in the 258 map. And which roads are those? Again, just want to be clear.
The map is in your office, let's just stick with that, I don't want to try and list them all.
Yeah.
Because there are other roads that weren't ever on the bus route that I believe are included in the 258 map.
Okay, because I have those four that you listed.
Yeah, I don't.
Don't, don't list those?
I listed them individually.
Okay.
Let's just go with the 258 map.
258 map.
Okay.
Which, which there.
And, and did I hear you say with no consideration of NISD bus route? Was that part of it or what?
That's due terminology, but what I'm saying, trying to say is that the use of a road by a school district for a bus route does not in and of itself mean that the county will maintain that road. If it's not properly dedicated public road that's included on the 258 map, you know, if they choose to drive down the proper roads, we're not going to maintain it, that's what I'm trying to say. No consideration, sounds a little harsh, because we do, we try to provide a little more maintenance on the bus routes and keep it in good shape, so that'd be probably not the best terminology, but.
Okay, I was just trying to.
The school district establishing a bus route does not equate to the county accepting it for maintenance.
And we wouldn't want to put a single school district on there because that, that applies to all school districts in the county also.
I have a first by Commissioner Dobianski, do I have a second?
My second motion.
Agenda item number 16, as we've stated, I have a first, a motion by Commissioner Dobianski, seconded by Commissioner Mallett. Is there further discussion?
I have another question for clarification, if that might, and I'm going to address it, this is to John C. Okay, the original agenda item says, consideration of possible action to formally adopt the existing bus routes in Pine Brook subdivision, so technically they're rejecting that, am I correct?
Either you can, you can read into either one. They're saying the buses are going to have to take the routes that are 258 maps if they want county maintained roads, or they're rejecting and saying, we're not going to maintain bus routes just because they're declared to be bus routes.
Because we're technically completely changing the whole, the whole agenda.
No, I don't think so, no.
You don't think so?
No, what, what motion was to confirm that the 258 maps would be what were maintained and those would effectively be the only routes that buses could use if they wanted to use county maintained roads.
Okay, I just need.
That's much more convoluted than what I think Commissioner Dobianski was wanting to put out there.
Okay, I just need the exact language from the motion.
And as, as Harry stated, the, the four roads that they're using as, as the ma, as the bus route right now are covered under them, so we are accepting.
We, we are maintaining those roads.
Yeah, we're maintaining the roads, we're not abandoning.
You're confirming that the bus routes are those roads that are maintained per sentence of 258, right?
Yes, correct, yes.
What I'm hearing you say.
Yes.
That's what he said and that's what Commissioner Mallett seconded. And I'm asking, is there any more discussion on that? Hearing not all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Mr. Walker, thank you very much. We're going to go to agenda item number 17, County Judge Joe Fowse, consider and take action to approve the Grimes County Child Welfare Board's recommendation to appoint Brenda Williams to the Grimes County, Grimes County Child Welfare Board. I make that motion.
I'll second.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 17 by County Judge Joe Fowse, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. Is there discussion? Hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 18, consider and take action to approve the amendment to the local, the interlocal agreement for performance post-mortem examinations by Montgomery County, Texas and authorize a county judge as signatory, see attachment number 18. Just they sent us their price list for autopsies and things of that sort. I've also shared with the JPs, our justices of the peace, some information that came from Fort Bend County, because I also received information from Travis County, so I guess there's a, a market for dead bodies, but, or at least cause of death. But anyway, we have typically used Montgomery County and then we've gone up to the Dallas area for a more serious or detailed, but this is just a matter of process where a number of our post-mortem examinations, i.e. our autopsies, go to Montgomery County and we just need to renew that contract.
It did increase.
Ma'am?
It did increase.
Yes.
It did increase, yes.
From 2100 to 2400. The other items on there are the same.
And that increase, is that, that will be covered in our upcoming budget or are we discussing that next week? Is it already in there?
Well, we, we have money allocated, that's one of those numbers, we don't ever know how many we're going, much we're going to use.
Yeah.
But yes, sir.
If we save some on that.
Yeah, that would be great.
God forbid we have a busload of people coming through and killed in an accident or something.
And we have.
And we could have because.
Don't even talk like that.
And we would have to pay the whole.
Not a busload, but we've seen it get mighty low, okay? Extremely low.
Yeah, there was one year I was with.
About two years ago.
Is there a motion?
I make the motion that we approve the amendment to the interlocal agreement for performance of post-mortem examinations by Montgomery County, Texas and authorize county judges signatories.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 18 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Cox. Is there further discussion? And hearing not all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Discuss and take ac, agenda item number 19, discuss and take action to appoint Judge Joe Fowse III, Commissioner Philip Cox, and Mayor Karen Hale to the BB Cog Board of Directors for a two-year term, see attachment 19. We already had this on the agenda once upon a time, but it was placed on there for a three-year. The court questioned that, should it be three years? And I think Commissioner Walker brought up, we have rotated that almost every two years. I talked to Tom Wilkinson, the executive director of BB Cog, and he told me, I'll quote, "Judge, they're your appointments, you put them on for however long you want." So the two-year request is here before you from myself, for Commissioner Cox, for Mayor Karen Hale.
Then I make the motion that we appoint Judge Joe Fowse III, Commissioner Philip Cox, and Mayor Karen Hale to the BB Cog Board of Directors for a two-year term.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Agenda item number 20, discuss and approve Commissioner's court schedule for 2021, see attachment 20. Section 81.005 states, states terms of court, comma, meetings. At the last regular term of each physical year of the county, the Commissioner's court by order shall designate a day of the week on which the court shall convene in a regular term each month during the next physical year. If the completion of the court's business does not require a monthly term, the court need not hold more than one term a quarter. A regular term shall continue for one week, but may be adjourned earlier if the court's business is completed. And then, the, the issue is currently, we have Commissioners Courts on the first, second, and fourth Wednesdays of the month, and because we do need to establish a schedule, the question is what schedule are we going to establish for the 2021 period? Commissioner Walker?
I wanted to ask the question, we moved Commissioners Courts to Wednesdays, once we realized that we had to, I think, approve payroll every week. It is conflicting with your dates for BB Cog. And I don't know if that's still a conflict for the treasurer's office as far as payroll, and I just wanted to. And I just wanted to...
Do you remember that statute that, uh, I believe was passed? But it limited what, uh, could be done, um, and I don't recall specific language, but the legislature took it up after the AG opinion came out. And I think it addressed that specific issue of payroll, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes.
That was one of the specific issues that were addressed. We wanted, and I asked Ben to add recurring payments and whatnot. If we signed a contract and you got a recurring payment that's going to be the same every time, why we have to have a meeting that can't be approved and then, you know, ratified by the court two days later, five days later, making sense to me, but is what it is. I think with the issue of payroll, payroll was resolved though.
And then I thought it came back later, was it, was, did it come back later?
It's also difficult when timesheets are due by 5:00 on Friday. And you need to approve it on Tuesday morning? That gives her one day to enter all the timesheets.
Well, I thought we do, like, um, is that just payroll only?
Yeah.
Okay.
Payroll was the only issue, yeah.
I just wanted to that.
But the desire was to try to get Commissioners Courts backs on, back on Tuesdays.
And so that's why I was asking, was, was that still, and I, what I hear you're saying, it's still an issue?
Well, and two, we've got our vendors all trained and expecting their checks cut on Wednesdays. So, you know, I understand.
They would still get their checks.
I would prefer, I would prefer to see you move it to Thursday instead of Tuesday, just because of...
Well, I'm going to make another motion then, I mean, I'll make a, throw another idea out there.
Okay.
Instead of, does it have to be the second week, which is the problem? It could go...
It can be what you, you recognize, I don't know if it's been while you've been, I've been here, Monday, there were Tuesday, there were Wednesday. I don't think we tried Thursday or Friday yet.
We didn't change it for dialysis.
That's right.
I was going to recommend that we skip the second and maybe...
One, three, four?
Yeah, or, or twice a month, whatever y'all decide. If it's been helpful to do three times a month, which we tried this year, then, you know, continue to three times. If not, you know, just move the same day, but change, you know, the week.
Do it one and three.
Do it one and three.
Well, I don't think that's going to make a difference on payroll. Unless you're talking about doing it on Wednesdays?
Yeah.
Yeah, even on Wednesday, I was just trying to avoid the second.
The first, the first and the third.
Yeah.
You don't want to do three meetings, huh?
No.
You going to provide lunch?
No.
There's very few of them, like when we have the third weekend, I mean, it's twice a year that we have a third weekend.
And that, that would eliminate the conflict with BB-Cog.
Yeah.
Because it keeps y'all rushing, and we need y'all at the table where the federal dollars are coming. That's the suggestion.
Well, do you want to put that suggestion in the form of a motion, Commissioner? On agenda item number 20?
Uh, let me see if I can even do that. I will make the motion that we approve the Commission's Court Schedule for 2021 to fall the first and third Wednesdays of the month.
Second.
9:00 AM.
You want to make that 7:45?
Nope.
I'm sorry, who seconded that?
I did.
There's a motion before the court on agenda item number 20 by Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski. But for clarification for the records, the motion is to change Commissioners Court monthly meetings to the first and the third Wednesday at 9:00 AM.
Starting January?
No, sir, that would, that would start October 1, or starting with, I think, for that question. That would start with our, uh...
Physical year.
Physical year, October the first. Does that be correct, Commissioner Walker?
Mm-hmm.
Is there going to be a conflict with the, uh, having the courtroom?
Well, I'm sure.
So we'll have to, yeah, we'll have to have our meetings...
A dynamic, a dynamic chief will work it out.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I've got every other course already scheduled through 2021, so, but we have a new building coming, so...
That's true.
And if it's not right, we'll make it work till April.
If it's not right, we meet under a tree.
I'm sorry.
All right.
Oh, no, I'll figure it out, I'll figure it out.
So is there any further discussion? Therefore, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Agenda item number 21, discuss and take action on items related to coronavirus relief fund. MJ, are you out there?
Sir?
Ma'am?
While my computer was not operational, I did receive an email from MJ asking that this item be removed until, back on to August 1st. So I don't know...
That's fine, that's fine. Calling the dogs.
They're already gone.
Lily, I mean, no, David?
Our internet is down.
David, Lily. All right, we're going to agenda item number 22. Consider and take action regarding the burn ban and authorize the county judge as signatory. Some areas have got rain, some areas haven't got but a half inch or so. Our emergency management services coordinator just walked in, does he have a recommendation on the burn ban?
I polled the fire chiefs, I've gotten responses from all but one of them, and it's about evenly split. Four say that it should be kept in place, three are saying they think it's a good idea to go ahead and lift it, and I have not heard back from one, so...
Yeah, it's, I mean, it's, it's close, I think if we maintain this more rain and cooler temperatures, it's going to help. We can, we have a workshop, we can maybe put an agenda item to discuss it next Wednesday, since we're going to...
You don't take action in a workshop?
Well, I'm saying we can make that agenda, since we're going to...
Yeah, like a separate meeting type.
Separate meeting. Discuss it as possible.
So your recommendation is to hold it in place?
Yes, I, we need some general rain to, to, throughout the county. It's getting close, I think, I'm afraid, you know, I think maybe put an agenda item for next Wednesday.
It's just Ryan out here.
We'll take no action. Thank you, sir. Agenda item number 23, receive any updates on the strategic plan?
MJ's here.
MJ, we, uh, we banked you to the next meeting.
Perfect, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, sorry. Hearing none on strategic plans, we'll go to agenda item number 24, is there a motion to adjourn?
I think we adjourn.
Agenda item, Commissioner Walker, seconded by Commissioner Dobianski, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned.